Good evening, everyone. Mayor Jones here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. We will call the meeting to order, Garden Grove Council Meeting to Order of Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Madam Clerk, may you please call roll?
Councilmember Brightigum?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen? Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sorry, I was on you.
Okay.
If everyone can place their right hand over their heart and face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. And we're actually going to start with Housing Authority tonight, which is Chair Kim Nguyen. So if you will, please orient yourself and then take over to run the Housing Authority meeting.
Thank you. May I please ask that everyone mute their phones and to speak, unmute and state your name? May I ask the clerk to please take roll?
Commissioner Beckles?
President, Carol Beckles.
Commissioner Brightigum?
Here, George Brightigum.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here, John O'Neill.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yeah.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Here, Klaufenstein.
Commissioner Solario?
Here, Solario.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
And Chair Kim Nguyen?
Here. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
No, Chair Kim Nguyen, there is no one from the public.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have three items. May I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second, second, Mr. Bowie.
Thank you. That's a motion from Council Chair, Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen and from Commissioner Bowie. May I please get the roll call vote?
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Brightigum?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Thank you. Are there any matters from commissioners?
No.
Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting and we will be reconvening on February, on Tuesday, February 23. I'll pass it back on to City Council. Mayor Jones?
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll convene City Council. I want to start with something out of order that I think you guys are all going to get behind. And this is, this is to introduce an emergency resolution for, of commendation for Lieutenant John Reynolds. And we're going to adjourn the meeting in his honor later tonight, but I've been asked to pull this forward. This is something that the, that the family will present at his upcoming funeral service. So in short, this is a, I'd like to make a motion for an emergency resolution of commendation. Two Sundays ago. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let me read just the context of it so that you know just generally what it is. So two Sundays ago, we lost a treasured and respected member of our Garden Grove City family and community, Police Lieutenant John Reynolds. John had been battling COVID-19 since late November and had started showing signs of improvement, which came as a relief to all of us and raised our hopes that he would recover. The news of his passing hit us like a ton of bricks. How could a defender and protector of our community, of tremendous integrity, commitment, professionalism, selflessness, and love for his family be taken away from all of us so tragically? COVID is a relentless adversary. While it may have taken John away from us, it will never erase the fond and cherished memories we will always keep of him. So we have a motion and a second to introduce that resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us on to presentations. We do have one presentation regarding the 46th Annual Americana Awards, Item 1A. So can we go to that?
Item 1A is that information on the 46th Annual Americana Awards is presented by Howard Cumberman, Executive Director of Cypress College Foundation. And Mr. Cumberman is on this call and is ready to provide you with that information.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, I wish we were all in person as all of you do. And I'm going to do my best in a very short period of time to paint a picture for you of what's taking place this year for the Americana Awards. But first, I want to thank the City Council and the Garden Grove City residents for continuing to support Cypress College and the foundation for so many years and with our Americana Awards. I also want to thank the City Committee. One of, your chair is here tonight, Pam Scher from Union Bank. She's listening on the line also as we present to you. The, the, there, you have 44 Citizens of the Year that have been honored over the years for, for Garden Grove. And you have 943 students from the City of Garden Grove who are currently attending Cypress College. We are doing our very best to continue to educate the students that are attending the college, even though we are also virtual and hope to return sometime soon. But we're providing emergency grants, we're providing scholarships, we're providing internet technology, whatever the students need to help them to graduate. And the proceeds from this event help to support those students with emergency grants and the $400,000 in scholarships that we give away to students every year from the foundation. This year's event is on Saturday, February 27. It is a live stream event that will take place from wherever you are. We have some fabulous celebration packages that'll be delivered to everybody's home within our service area. And that'll include a full meal, wine, dessert, Disney commemorative item, and some other surprises. So it's going to be some, some great things that are going to be taking place, along with honoring all of your past honorees. This is our reunion year. We don't have new honorees this year, but we're going to be honoring all of your past 44 Citizens of the Year and all the citizens from those communities who have participated with us through tribute videos and through participation as well. We will still have a silent auction and a live auction that'll be taking place as people participate. And Yamaha has donated a pair of electric bikes valued at $7,000 that will be in the drawing. So we've got some great surprises. So although we're not going to be able to be in person at the Disneyland Hotel as we have in the past, we're going to make it exciting, we're going to make it fun, and we're going to raise money for students to help them to continue their education. So I want to thank you for having me here tonight and hope that, that you'll continue to participate in the event and encourage your residents to do so.
All righty. Thank you very much. Any, any questions or comments, colleagues? Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, being, I don't know, the Cypress alum myself, I have very fond memories of, of the school. And I'm just really glad to see that you guys are continuing to thrive, even though it's virtual. And I know there's a lot of hardship to be in there. And I'm just glad you guys could keep on keeping on, so to speak.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much for attending and doing the presentation for us. We look forward to another great award ceremony.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, that takes us on to oral communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody present wishing to address the council?
No, there is no one present. And we only received one written comment from Mr. Craig Durfee. And it was regarding graffiti that is fairly heavy in the area of the Magnolia Orange Wood Garden Grove, Orange County Flight Control Channel. And that's all I have tonight. Mr. Mayor.
All righty, great. Thank you. Okay, we will now recess and, recess and conduct other legislative bodies' business. So I believe first will be Sanitary District. So I'll pass the gavel over to President Patrick Fatbouie. Fat, are you muted?
Mayor Jones, Vice Chair John O'Neill, could you please take it over? I don't feel good in my, in my stomach. I need to, I need to excuse myself. I'll do a minute.
Sure, no problem. No problem. If, if the clerk could please call roll for the Sanitary District.
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here. Thank you very much. We'll note that President Bowie is present, but I'll be conducting this since he is not feeling well. We will now go to, we held oral communications simultaneously. We will now go, we did, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on closed session. Sorry. Go to the right board here. I got it right now.
Okay. So we've already held oral communications. We do have a consent item. This is just to receive and file the minutes for the meeting held on December 8, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it, Jones.
I'll second, Jones.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Member Brightigum?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion received. Motion received. Six yes votes.
Thank you very much. If there's no other matters from any members, we will go ahead and adjourn to the next Sanitary District meeting, which will be Tuesday, February 23 at, at 6:30.
Vice President O'Neill? Oh, sorry.
Vice President, before we adjourn, this is Omar Sandoval, District Counsel. I do want to report that we had a closed session earlier today. And there is no reportable action out of that closed session. That's all we have.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn and go to.
Successor Agency, we'll go to Successor Agency next. So I will, in Successor Agency, Madam Clerk, may you please call roll?
Member Brightigum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie? Vice Chair Bowie is absent. Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already got oral simultaneously with other legislative bodies. So we'll move on to consent items. And it's just 2A, receive and file the minutes. Do I have a motion?
They're moved.
Deidre, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigum?
Yeah.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Any matters from Successor Agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn Successor Agency and we will reconvene City Council. That takes us on to consent items. And it's recommended that Items 3A through 3F be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items. Any requests to pull? Or a motion?
I'll go ahead and move it. O'Neill?
Second, George.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowie is absent. Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us next on the agenda to Item 4, which is Commission and Committee Matters. Tonight, we'll be doing most of the appointments. Terry brought to my attention last minute that Admin Board of Appeals is actually supposed to only have five members, and we had selected seven. So we'll hold off on Admin Board of Appeals, but I'd like to move forward on the rest. There were, you should have received kind of late in the day, and I apologize for procrastination on this, but it's just a difficult process to put all these nominations together. For the public, I solicited feedback from all the different council members about their likes, dislikes, any color they could add in terms of who they wanted to see on each commission. And then also took into consideration who are current incumbents, picked up some feedback from staff, some feedback, just, you know, kind of whatever I could find to try and do my very best to make this as fair and democratic as possible and primarily to try and oblige council members' requests as much as possible. I think it's imperfect, and so hopefully everybody is satisfied with the overall result in aggregate of the quality of what we're coming up with. There were a couple last minute minor changes. So I'll hand it over to Terry and she can read off the entire list. And then what I would like to do is hopefully take a motion on the whole thing. So go ahead, Terry.
All right. For Planning Commission, the selections are Dale Soffner, Daisy Perez-Castellanos, John Ramirez, Josh Lindsay, Jeremy Lehman, Asia Cunningham, and Arianna Aristegui. For Traffic Commission, Randy Arbghast, Ricardo Cepeda, Yasmin Vasquez, Jeffrey Sanders, James Webb, Joseph Loricchia, and Roger Flanders. Parks and Recreation, Parks, Recreation and Arts Commission, Ted Stevens, Reina Solis, David Johnson, Andrea Perez, Kang Bao, Olivia Tran, and Alan Strickland. Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission, Maureen Blackman, Vicky Hanson, Bonnie Crawford, Eric Williams, Brandon Shavira, Daniel Gonzalez, and Tuan Tran. For the Downtown Commission, Rick Lerma, Juan Angel Zaragoza, Jennifer Stewart, Rebecca Wyner, Elizabeth Dine, Nathan Lindley, and Marilyn Tortolano. For the Measure Oversight Committee, Sandy Thomas, Mark Mechanic, Les Malo, Steve Sanders, Claire Bischoff, Chris Beard, and Megan Holst.
All righty. Thank you, Terry. Colleagues, any comments, questions, discussion, or a motion, please?
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen, I'll motion to approve.
Deidre, I second it.
All righty, thank you. Roll call vote, please, Terry?
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us next to Item 5, which is Items for Consideration. We do have one item listed, 5A.
5A is appropriation of funding and approval of an agreement for public safety software with Axon Enterprise, Inc. And Chief DeRay is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The Police Department is seeking City Council approval to award a contract to Axon Enterprise Incorporated, or Axon, for public safety software and related components in the amount of approximately $2,662,951 to replace the current records management system, or known as RMS, and computer aided dispatch system, commonly referred to as CAD, and to upgrade, maintain, and manage the department's current body worn camera and in-car video system. The Police Department purchased a CAD RMS system, which is Spillman, now Motorola, in 2014, and over time has updated the hardware and software. The current system integrates the CAD and other third-party components with the RMS system. Because it requires a small number of servers with each one needing to be maintained, secured, and managed by the city's IT staff, a significant amount of time is spent supporting the current system. Members of the Police Department partnered with IT staff to analyze the system and evaluate how to update it with modern features and applications. Staff determined that the most practical and cost efficient method of implementing a new solution was for the Police Department to seek a vendor that offers a fully integrated cloud-based CAD RMS software solution. In November 2019, members of the Police Department attended a meeting with Axon for presentation on their integrated CAD RMS system. Police Department and IT staff members attended a second presentation in October 2020 and were impressed by the advanced functionality, ease of use, and full integration capabilities of the software. In 2019, City Council approved in agreement with Axon for the purchase and deployment of a body worn camera, in-car video system with Evidence.com Digital Evidence Management. Thus far, the system has exceeded expectations and the department has experienced exceptional customer support and service from the vendor. The proposed Axon CAD RMS solution will tie directly into the AxonEvidence.com Digital Evidence Management System, which is proprietary technology. The RMS portion of the Axon system has an interview data file component for memorializing investigative interviews. It also contains a professional standards module and a third-party video playback feature, all of which directly integrate into the AxonEvidence.com system. Another advantage of the Axon ecosystem is the ability to share documents and digital evidence directly with, with the district attorney's office. The Axon system is cloud-based, which allows for significant cost savings on servers, storage, and maintenance performed by city IT staff versus the current CAD RMS system. Per IT staff, cloud-based systems are preferred as they are less prone to corruption and are not as labor intensive for IT personnel. The department's current body worn camera The department's current body worn camera in-car video system are proprietary and will only fully and seamlessly integrate with the proposed Axon CAD RMS solution. Other vendors have their own CAD RMS solutions, however, none can integrate with the proprietary Axon system. Axon also allows for the cost of the system to be spread over five years. It is for these reasons that the department has determined the Axon solution to be the most efficient and cost-effective choice for this project. Pursuant to the Garden Grove Municipal Code 2.50.060 subsection G, and based upon the recommendation of the chief of police, the police department requests that the city council determine it to be in the best interest of the city to forego the bidding process and select Axon Enterprise Incorporated as the vendor for the department's proposed CAD RMS system. The current agreement with Axon for the body worn cameras and in-car video system does not expire until 2023. However, this proposed agreement for a combined solution, if it should be approved, the current agreement would be terminated and all components of the proposed solution would be covered under the new five-year agreement. It will also allow for a new body worn camera upgrade one year earlier, which is in 2021, and a new fleet IBS camera system one year earlier in 2024, thus providing the department with new technology and capabilities. Additionally, because of the continued partnership, Axon has agreed to provide the police department with 10 new body worn cameras for our SWAT officers at no cost. Aside from maintenance, warranty, and firmware upgrades, this provides a cost savings of approximately $7,000 in addition to mitigating potential future liability for the department and the city on SWAT operations. The total cost of the new CAD RMS system combined with the current Axon camera system under a new contract is approximately $2,662, let me correct that, $2,662,951, which is paid over five years. The police department currently allocates approximately $196,919 annually for maintenance of its Spillman Motorola CAD RMS system and approximately $295,765 for Axon body camera and IBS system. Should the proposed agreement be approved, these allocations would be applied towards the cost of a new fully-integrated Axon solution beginning in fiscal year 2021 through 2022. The implementation period for the Axon CAD RMS system is approximately 18 months. To avoid incurring additional maintenance costs for the existing Spillman system, the department is striving to go live with the new system by July 1, 2022. Initial licensing and professional services costs in the amount of $128,203 will need to be paid to Axon by early February 2021 to ensure timely implementation. This is a prorated amount reflecting the cost for the remaining portion of the fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Funds received from annual allocations of SLESA, which are restrictive law enforcement revenue, will be used to offset additional costs. Fiscal year 2020 through 2021, $123,058 from existing SLESA funds currently not being allocated to other uses. Fiscal year 2021 through 2022, $50,000 not to exceed that amount from existing SLESA funds to accommodate unforeseen additional costs during the pre-production and implementation phases of the project. Fiscal years 2022 through 2025, $203,92 spread over four years with future SLESA revenue to cover the amount not currently in the budget for these systems. Funds will be appropriated during the budget development accordingly. It is recommended that city council authorize the request to dispense with the bidding process in the best interest of the city pursuant to Garden Grove Municipal Code 2.50.060 subsection G. Also awarded contract to Axon Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $2,662,951.13 pursuant to available funds in the budget and supplemental funding and appropriate $173,058 in SLESA funds to the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget for year one for Axon contract costs and for any unforeseen additional costs and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute the agreement and make any minor modifications as necessary thereto on behalf of the city. This is the end of my report and Lieutenant Bex and I are available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief, very much. Colleagues, any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor Jones, if I may, this is Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Please go ahead.
Not really any questions per se. Obviously, after listening to the staff report and having conversations with the chief, I think this is extremely important for the city and for the police department. I realize my colleagues may have some further comments, but at this time I'd like to make a motion.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? George on the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
I don't know if they have comments or not.
Okay.
Any comments?
Just, I just have one. You know,
Go ahead.
This system, Axon, is the industry standard and it greatly improves, you know, our transparency with our community. You know, having these cameras really helps in a lot of risk management applications and being able to prove that the officers are, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing. Sometimes things get convoluted and the video is very helpful to resolve a lot of public issues. So anyway, very supportive of this. This is one of the better systems, if not the best system, out there. And probably should have been the system we went to begin with, but, you know, hindsight's 20/20. I think this is a great, great opportunity. So I'm all for it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Six yes votes.
Alrighty, thank you. That takes us on to matters at this point. We do have one listed item, which I think comes with the presentation. So this is item 6A, discussion of potential short-term and long-term impacts of COVID-19 related to homelessness, as requested by city manager Scott Stiles. I'll hand it over to Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers will, and the community will remember that back in May of 2019, we had a study session where we talked about a number of our efforts working with the homeless issue in our community. And we continue to provide additional services and take on new challenges related to this issue. So we thought it was, it was very timely for our community and economic development director Lisa Kim and her staff have a number of updates that they want to share with council members in the community. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Lisa Kim, also our assistant city manager, to walk us through some of their plans that they've been involved in.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. I am going to request assistance from our IT department with the information. I hope the council is able to view the screen. This is walking us through our End Homeless webpage that has been updated and consolidated with our homeless resources. So good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a presentation of a preliminary roadmap to address the potential short-term and long-term impacts of the COVID pandemic on homelessness and the introduction of the draft 2021 comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness. Is the council able to view the screen with the website?
I see it on the television.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brightigan. So the information, it's been some time since the May 2019 study session in which the city's comprehensive approach to address homelessness was presented. At that time, we provided an overview of the 2019 point-in-time count data, of which 225 individuals experienced homelessness were identified. We also shared information about the Garden Grove Police Department Special Resource Team efforts. In addition, there was a summary provided of direct costs associated with addressing homelessness for fiscal year 1819 and the fiscal impact was identified to be approximately $825,000. The information related to the comprehensive approach to address homelessness is attached as attachment one to your staff report and also placed on the website at the bottom of the screen. Since then, the city has been actively undertaking homeless activities and solutions. The special resource team was expanded from two officers to four with seven-day coverage along with support services through CityNet. The city also funded 211OC to collect Garden Grove homeless data. We also programmed emergency solution grants towards homeless prevention, shelter services, street outreach programs, and activities. We've also expanded our city's food box and hot meal programs to seniors, individuals, and families impacted by COVID. We've implemented the homeless emergency assistance and rental transition program, also known as the HART program, to provide rental assistance to Garden Grove families. We've also expanded coordination with our regional partners, including the County of Orange, the Commission to End Homelessness, and the Central Service Planning Area City. As part of the website, if you scroll further down on the webpage, access to homeless resources can be available via this click on under homeless resources. And as you scroll further down on the webpage, you will be able to find the current city's service providers and the various resources they currently support. With the uncertainty of the economy, unemployment, and housing instability compounded with the public health emergency due to the COVID pandemic that persists, the objective is to continue having a proactive community dialogue, share homeless resources, and provide a forum in which public engagement can occur. To that end, a preliminary roadmap in the form of the draft comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness is presented this evening. The key components of the draft strategic plan is intended to be flexible and adaptable to community needs while developing a framework of goals and strategic actions to implement homelessness prevention activities, solutions over the next five years, given opportunities and available resources. A few of the goals outlined in the plan include develop community engagement efforts around homelessness and raise awareness about available resources and best practices. We will explore expanding homeless prevention efforts, which includes rapid rehousing, street outreach, and shelter services. We will look to enhance our data tracking and homeless outreach activities among city staff and local service providers. We will continue to explore options for emergency housing, which may include homeless shelters and navigation centers within the city of Garden Grove. We will also continue to explore opportunities to increase access to affordable and permanent supportive housing within the city. I would like to take a brief moment to share a little bit of information about Garden Grove's homeless assist data. So on the city's website, if you click onto homelessness data and scroll further down onto the page, it launches the data dashboard. So I'm going to go through a little bit of the information that's available. So if you click onto the dashboard, it provides you access to data that is updated quarterly. And the data that is viewed on the screen spans from July through September 2020. So the first screen on your page, you will note that this is the HMIS data, which is the Homelessness Management Information System. And this essentially details all services provided to Garden Grove homeless population. So if you look at the top of the screen, you will notice the homeless service providers were able to assist approximately 465 homeless Garden Grove clients or approximately 195 households during this time period. If you look down as to where my arrow is showing the disability information, approximately 12% of Garden Grove clients have a disability and 9% of clients were chronically homeless. We can have, we also added a feature, if you click onto the top-left funding options, we've also extrapolated data for those that individuals, the service providers that were received ESG and ESG COVID funds. So through the ESG and ESG COVID allocation, the city was able to assist 139 homeless Garden Grove clients. I think something positive to note, if we scroll further down to the bottom-right box that identifies exit destinations, a total of 50 clients secured permanent housing, which translates to approximately 36% of Garden Grove individuals, and another 14 clients secured temporary housing. So on the bottom of this data, you can shift to a second page. This is the 211OC call center database and this information summarizes everyone calling into the 211OC seeking help. If we look at call volume, which is the box on the top left, 211OC received approximately 1,065 calls over this time period from Garden Grove residents, which constitute a 67% increase when compared to a year ago. If we scroll further down into the next box that is identified as the main need category, we have approximately 932 Garden Grove residents requesting housing assistance, which translates to approximately 87%, and 580 Garden Grove residents requesting food and meal assistance. The feature of this dashboard allows you to further drill down into more detail. So if you scroll or hover your cursor above the housing information, you'll see the data shift. Approximately 291 callers requested rental assistance. So if we scroll further down to the subcategory, approximately 203 Garden Grove callers requested homeless shelter assistance. So if we scroll back up and click on the meals and food option, this information further identifies approximately 400 Garden Grove callers requested food pantry assistance and approximately 63 clients requested home-delivered meals. So this database continues to be refined over time and is currently posted and will be continually updated quarterly. So over the next few weeks, a series of virtual meetings and information webinars would be initiated as part of the city's community engagement process. This would include encouraging community participation in the upcoming virtual homelessness 101 webinar hosted by the Orange County United Way, which is scheduled for February 9. We are also working with the Orange County United Way on their advocacy 101 webinar, which is scheduled on February 19. We are currently collaborating with Fair Housing Foundation to present a fair housing rental counseling workshop and we are working with our partners to provide the workshop in both Spanish and Vietnamese and we're hopeful to have this be available for outreach sometime in early March. We are also working to engage Garden Grove Coalition to End Homelessness, which includes our community partners, the SRT, our local faith-based organization, and service providers. We are also working to conduct and facilitate a virtual community stakeholder information forum sometime in March. Part of this information gathering process will include continual update to our homelessness resource web- resource webpage, which we're viewing right now, which we hope to transition to Garden Grove's homelessness toolkit. In addition to advancing the community engagement process and incorporating all community feedback and engagement, um, information, it is envisioned the refinement of the draft Comprehensive Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness will be brought back to the City Council for adoption and will ultimately serve to guide and coordinate efforts to alleviate homelessness and align Garden Grove's local efforts with regional coordination. With council concurrents, staff will proceed with the community engagement process as outlined in the draft Comprehensive Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any question the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Colleagues, any comments or questions? Okay. Um, seeing none, then thank you very much for the presentation. Is that an action item? It says it is an action item, so what are we supposed to act upon? Just receive and file?
Proceed with the community engagement plan.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to proceed with the community engagement plan process?
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen. Deidre, I second it.
Motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloppenstein?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Alrighty, thank you. That takes us on to matters from Commissioners. Uh, Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would just like to take a minute to thank, uh, Lisa Kim and Nate Robbins and, and all of their staff that worked, um, very diligently and hard on the Renus gag appeals. Um, I attended the hearing and was disappointed in the ruling. Our appeal was denied. It was more frustrating that many of the board members agreed, um, with the reasoning behind the appeal, um, that refused to, you know, or said that their hands were tied and were unable to make any changes at that point in time. But, um, both Lisa and Nate presented, and they did an amazing job, um, so just want to make sure that we thank them. Um, I also want to thank the city clerk, Liv, and Caesar for their work, um, were working with me to kind of make some efficiency and, um, streamlined changes to the commission process on the website, so just wanted to give them a, a quick shout-out for that. Um, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Brightigan?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, to remind everybody that the, the city has resumed temporary outdoor business permits for our, um, restaurants and businesses within the city of Garden Grove since we've, uh, moved back into the purple tier system. So I just want to make sure businesses are aware and they can contact City Hall if, uh, they're interested in obtaining an outdoor, uh, operating permit. District One, um, this weekend, we celebrated, uh, 90th birthday of Mrs. Deloria Bernstein. Um, so congratulations on that, Deloria, and, uh, I just wanted to put out, you know, the city now offers a letter, uh, of recognition for senior citizens who turn 90 or 100. So, um, if you turn 90 or 100 and you're resident of Garden Grove, reach out to your councilman and, uh, we'll make sure we get the letter sent to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember O'Neal?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, wanted to encourage folks out there, you know, we're going through unprecedented times. It's difficult. Um, you either know someone or you're affected yourself either with COVID or financial difficulties or no work. Uh, please reach out to your family members, anybody that, uh, would be happy to help you if you reach out to them. There's a lot of people suffering mental health issues and making, um, decisions that are not good for them in the long term. So please, please, reach out for help. Uh, we all know someone at this point that's been affected one way or another and multiple people, really, and people that have even passed away. And, um, you know, my sorrow in the passing of John Reynolds, he was quite a guy, and, uh, I know the mayor will, uh, close the meeting on his behalf. Um, also regarding the comments about, you know, graffiti and the crime, you know, idle hands are the devil's playground. So I think with the pandemic, things have ticked up, uh, in our, our county floodways. There's some, there's some low channels there in District Two over near Magnolia Park, and they get in there and they hang out and graffiti, and the, the police are on top of it as much as they can be, but it, it's hard 24/7 to keep those graffiti people from spraying the wall, so it's a constant daily battle that we fight there. So we, we're doing our best there, and we will continue to do that, and we'll work with the county on that, too. So, uh, that's all I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Deidre Tuho Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's like, uh, just like, uh, we, we have the outdoor, uh, have been reason for all the business, I just would encourage all the constituents and residents of Garden Grove to support our local business by Garden Grove, um, to help one another's and, uh, continue wearing masks. Um, I know we have multiple, uh, superpart has been, um, the second part has been open in SoCal University, so there are more people, um, that vaccinated. And, uh, I want, also want to give a kudo to staff and Lisa Kim for the very well, um, the presentations of the COVID-19 related to homelessness. Uh, thank you so much for that, and, um, back to you, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Patrick Fatbuie, are you still with us or no? Okay. Um, Councilmember Stephanie Cloppenstein?
Um, I would just like to take a minute to, um, wish my grandmother, um, who's unfortunately in failing health, but I just wanted to, uh, wish her this past Saturday was her 97th birthday, born and raised right here in Garden Grove. Um, she's very special to me, and, uh, although this is a hard time for our family and, and for her, um, it's still a monumental birthday, and I just want to wish her a very happy birthday. That's all.
Thank you, Stephanie. Happy birthday to your grandma, and we know that you've been going through a whole lot, so thanks for actually being here with us tonight despite it all.
You bet.
Um, City Manager Scott Styles, any comments for the good of the order?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the only, uh, I wanted to mention just very briefly, uh, we know that there's a lot of great sorrow in our police department among, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Police Lieutenant John Reynolds, brothers and sisters. Um, also, you know, we've all heard the tremendous impact that he's made in the community. Um, I also wanted to say just on behalf of all of the civilian employees that work in City Hall, Public Works, some of our community service facilities, and elsewhere, you know, not just to within the police department, John was known by almost everybody in the city workforce, and there's going to be a lot of people that, um, there's been a lot of heavy hearts in, in our buildings with John's passing. Uh, I know that, uh, from a personal standpoint, when I moved to Garden Grove, you know, a little over five years and, uh, five years ago now, Sergeant Reynolds at the time was one of the first people that came up to my wife and my two daughters and just welcomed them with open arms, and, uh, that's something I'm never going to forget. He was a consummate professional. He respected everyone, and everyone respected him. And, uh, he's just, he's going to be greatly missed, and, um, I know there'll be more opportunities for us to celebrate his life, but, um, I just know all that the civilian city employees are really going to miss him as well, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Omar, do we have any need for a closed session or any reporting outs whatsoever?
No, Mayor, for City Council, we are good.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we're coming to the adjournment of our meeting. We're actually going to adjourn tonight in memory and honor of Garden Grove Police Lieutenant John Reynolds, um, born October 20th, 1961, deceased January 17th, 2021. On September 7th, 1995, following nine years of service with the Orange County Probation Department, Lieutenant John Reynolds joined the Garden Grove Police Department as a patrol officer, initiating a 26-year illustrious career with the agency he so proudly served and a selfless devotion to the community he dearly loved. And from 1998 to 2018, John served in a variety of police assignments, including gang officer, SWAT, undercover investigator, and sergeant assigned to the Youth Services Unit, where he mentored at-risk youth, as he often did with young police officers. In 2018, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned as a watch commander. During his highly decorated tenure with the GGPD, John was instrumental in several department accomplishments, including the formation of the Gang Reduction Intervention Program, known as GRIP, implementing active shooter training in local schools, and overseeing the annual Call to Duty Police Memorial honoring Garden Grove's fallen five officers killed in the line of duty. In 2005 and 2006, he was named Officer of the Year, and in 2014, he was awarded the Medal of Merit. John's unending passion, commitment, and service to the city of Garden Grove was mirrored in his deep involvement with the community. He served on the executive boards of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove and the Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove, and participated in the Garden Grove Drug-Free Coalition and the Violence Prevention Coalition of Orange County. In honor of his unparalleled service to the community, he was named Man of the Year in 2019 by the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. On Sunday, January 17th, 2021, at the age of 59, John Reynolds courageously arrived at the end of his watch, passing away from complications due to COVID-19 at Garden Grove Medical Hospital Center. The following day, scores of GGPD personnel tearfully saluted their beloved friend and colleague as a police motorcade accompanying Lieutenant John Reynolds' hearse passed by Garden Grove Police Headquarters and City Hall. John is survived by his wife Jenna, two adult daughters, and an 18-month-old son named Ronan. We will never, ever forget, John, he was a true, not only a great cop, but also a true community leader, um, and, and a personal friend. I can't believe he's gone and will miss him. We will all miss him very greatly. And with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting in his honor and memory. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night.